Cloud.
Where we're at tonight, guys.
So.
I believe so. Let me just double check this. Recording in progress. We are able to start.
So we're up to a late start. I'd like to call the May 10th, 2022, leading the Manchester Board of Education Board. As I was, let's begin with the questions.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's start with the goal. Doc, you want to begin first? They've done what event member?
Renee Waldron, Nora McPherson.
Stephanie.
Melanie Brady Shemley, Sandra Strubar.
Sally Vettrey.
Sharon.
Thank you. So we have two members both with excuse to have this this evening. Agenda review. Is there anyone who'd like to add anything to the agenda?
I'd like to add the issue regarding the magic.
Second. Motion in a second. Big discussion on that. Let's put all in favor. So here is again, let's put that up. Let's put that actually since it was.
You can't hear over there. Okay, so we'll have to speak out louder.
Yeah, you hear anything?
Can you hear me now?
Now I can.
All right. Let's put that at the end of correspondence to the board. The other changes to the agenda. I'm going to restrain from having any comments today. So we're off to a late start and we'll go away to presentations. So Sheamus, Sandra will be presenting this evening on social.
So, Trevor Benninger, and ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Sheamus Collin. I'm the special director of the district. It's nice to see you all tonight. Finishing out my sixth year in Winchester, which is pretty hard to believe. And ninth year in the state of Connecticut on top of my additional six years in Massachusetts, so only 15 full years of education. So pretty excited to be here and talk about SCL this evening. I know interest, Sandra Murphy, you're my assistant director.
Hello. Is this okay?
Definitely use a microphone.
Oh, your microphone. I apologize. Is that loud enough?
You are. Like this. Okay, thanks. It's not my first time, if you can believe it, but thank you, Mr. Chairman of the board, that you've been down on the board, Superintendent Shemley, for having me today. Very excited to be here and talk about social emotional learning. So I'm going to keep a close eye on my watch because I could talk about it all day. Really want to thank you for your commitment over the course. I've been in this district for seven years, but really building our social emotional programming, investing time and resources into our students' mental health and wellbeing. So I have been, this is my seventh year in district. I started as a school psychologist at Pierce School for a couple of years. Then I'm in district wide, helping develop some programming, participating in planning of least the teamings and assessments. And tele moved into this position. So thank you for that. I'm loving my role as assistant director of student services and supervising the special education programming at the Deborah's School. Thank you. Okay. So up here is like really just infographic about when we were asked to talk about social emotional wellbeing and the learning and our programming for district. I went back to our school closure, just kind of made it a reflective process during our school closure and that. The summer that came up after that, we really dedicated some time to what are, what are our students going to need when we come back from that? And that was very overwhelming as a lot of information coming at us, telehealth, trauma services, collective trauma, a lot of dark and that was going on. And we really needed to be mindful and intentional about our programming and what services that we were going to offer that were based in evidence so that our students could come back and have a supportive system around them. So we made a plan to, one, implement a universal screener. So just as we screen for students reading and writing. Difficult stuff here. We need to do that for social emotional health and wellbeing as well. We knew we had to implement a fidelity or tier one curriculum, which is second step. That's also evidence based programming. But we needed our screener to align with that tier one curriculum that we're wanting. And then we needed to further develop a robust intervention system at every tier. So general education, students who needed a little more support. And then our third tier, which is more individualized programming. And we needed to do some professional development in the area of trauma and recovery. Something that we were really grateful for as an SCL team was before COVID, we, there's a lot of investment in resources as far as interventions for different types of social skills deficits or interpersonal relationships. So the district really invested in those areas. So we had a robust arsenal of interventions. On top of that, we had added our resets that were in each building as well as individualized within smaller settings and within the classroom for individual reset boxes, as we call it. So that was kind of our, our plan.
So as you can see from the slide in front of you, that is. So as you can see from the slide in front of you, ladies and gentlemen, that this is the document that we based off of. We came back from COVID as Sandy said. We had step one, step two, and step three. It really kind of went along with our tiered intervention model that we're going to talk about in a few minutes.
So the last year was our first year implementing the universal screeners called the Deborah's Union Success Assessment. So strength based screeners, eight questions that the general education teacher completes. There are things that are very benign, like is this student ready to learn? Do they seem excited about school? Based off of those ratings, students fall into a bell curve. They've launched a typical range. There are students that exhibit strengths and there are students that need more instruction in that area. So for this purposes, we put up some cohort data as well as building wide data here just for your review. So last year was our first year of implementation. We saw that kindergarten, well, we, what we wanted was eighty percent of, at least eighty percent of our students be falling within the typical or strength range. So when we came back from school closure, we actually saw that most students, except in second grade, were falling within the typical or strength range. So we know at that time, we needed to keep them where they were at and then push them a little bit further. So we saw a lot of growth in our kindergarten as well as second grade cohort. And I think most, most of our younger grades respond really well to this into intervention because we're building routines and expectations within the classroom. So our data looked pretty good for our first year. Our second rating of the fall 2021 DASSA many dated was our first year partnering with the Connecticut State Department of Education. They actually chose a DASSA screen this year as a pilot project for districts within the state of Connecticut. So we were able to, one, which is exciting, be ahead of the curve. We could do a screener that the state department endorsed this year and we're part of our first pilot project. So the data that you're seeing here is a fall rating and a mid-year rating. We are working on our spring ratings now. So the most impacted grades in the fall were again, the younger grades. And we were very intentional this year about providing PD day where we could analyze the data that we got from the screener. We provided on that PD day, like a data, we have a data process for how we review academic data. We applied that process to our social emotional data. We worked collaboratively in grade level groups to develop a scope and sequence for our tier one curriculum. And then our council staff embedded within there some lessons on areas that we really struggled in according to our data. And one was school directed behavior. The second for Pearson was personal responsibility for bachelor of behavioral regulation. So we embedded and kind of folded in when differentiated to our core, those areas of need. And so you can see that for some of our grades, we, there was a strong improvement, especially in the pre K through, through two or K through two level. I would say in sixth grade, one of the reasons, well, we'll see how spring comes, but sixth grade is a big year for student success plans and goal directed behavior. A lot of that happens mid-year to the spring. So I would expect to see a really nice jump back up there for students within the typical or strength range. Some of the preliminary data that I just looked at has some really nice, really nice response to the intervention that we've been giving this year. And I have to say, it's been such a collaborative effort between grade level teachers, council staff, administrators, and continuous progress monitoring.
One thing, just so when you're looking at this data, you color, the way we always do cohort data for any new board members is if you follow the colors, that's the grade the previous year, then the same color is that grade this year. So you can see it steps. So you can see last year's first graders were kind of that tannish orange color. Those are this year's second graders. So just follow the color. You can kind of easily track how their performance has changed over time. Thank you.
And I. And I think the important thing to look at that data as well too is that although we have made small improvements, maybe some lower in some cases, we're still in that average range, right where we want to be. We want to keep kids there. We want to keep them moving up. What we don't want to see is a dramatic drop down, right? That's where we'd be concerned about some of the things that are happening. Because they had to talk about preliminary data. So about 455 out of 522 students that take the screener have completed our spring data. So we're just waiting for probably three, four more classrooms to get that data in and then we'll have that for our spring data, which we will then again have time to analyze and identify what our next steps are moving forward. So the next thing I want to kind of take you guys to walk through quickly is what we consider our tier one, our tier two, and our tier three SCL instruction, our social emotional instruction that we provide kids, okay? So remember, just like when we talk about tier one and academic, that's what everything, it should be in the classroom with every student is getting, okay? So as you can see here, I'm not going to read through everything here. We can see the Deborah, the decimating, which the Sanders spoke about as one of our screeners that allows us to pick up the data that we're looking at. We then plan our SCL tier one curriculum to go along with that. That's our second step. That's our scope and sequence that we're following to put it through. And it could possibly be some of the student success points that we're talking about in sixth grade. We're differentiated to the core with the following, specific directive behavior or lessons, the choose love program, which is something that we brought in last year during the end of COVID when we returned. And then relating stack of by plan and purpose of tier one pushing instruction. That means our social workers and our staff are getting into the classroom and working in the classroom level, not pulling kids into a small setting where they're working individually or group, or teaching kids how to do it in the classroom setting at tier one level. And again, then providing coaching to our teachers. So our teachers feel comfortable teaching SCL because our teachers, our English teachers, math teachers, science teachers, they're not social emotional learners, they're not social emotional teachers, but our coaches, our social workers, our counselors are working with our staff to do so. So can you click the next one? Thank you. So as we go up the tiers, we're now at a tier two, okay? Tier two is anywhere from about thirty five to forty percent of our students in tier one that shifts up to, okay? This is where we start to really identify those extra students that we're looking at to, maybe they're not growing, which is our tier one instruction in the classroom. So that's when we might do some of our program that we've talked about before, the zones of regulation, our reset room, those things that we've spoken to the board about previous years. For people that are new to the, to the board this year, all those, those topics that I'm talking about have incrementally grown for five years. So we've been building this programming up from the bottom up from the last five years. So some of the things that you see here today might not have been here three years ago, right? So we're still continually building upon, looking at the research to figure out what next is, what's our next step? Couple of things that we've been doing at this level, we do check ins and checkouts. So we're doing a little bit more intense conversations with students, maybe checking in the morning, checking out before they leave. That might be done by a social worker, a school psychologist, a professional, maybe that's been trained a little bit more. We've also done some training, some FBA's and BIPs. And so an FBA is a functional behavioral assessment and a BIP is a behavioral dimension plan. And so what those basic FBA's do is they look at what the behaviors that we're seeing and they target that behavior and they come up with a plan to help student and a staff member get that student to be more actively engaged in the classroom setting. Sure. So a brief example of, of the, of the behavior or FBA.
Functional behavior and how that might need and do with it.
Yeah, absolutely. So a functional behavior assessment will be done. A student says exhibiting the same behavior over and over again. So let's look at a tier two behavior. Lack of engagement, work refusal could be a tier two issue that we're dealing with, right? We're not dealing with aggression or anything else like that. We will look at that and we would collect data over a period of time. We would look at him, he or she at gym class, English class, at recess. We look at a whole variety of different areas where this student is, and then we would take a look at what the antecedents are, what's happening before the student starts to do work refusal. Well, we found out after looking at it for a while, student really struggles with reading and every single time it's time for the reading block, he starts to act on do work refusal. He wants to go for a walk. We now identified that we have to get to that student before that reading block to make sure that we're providing some support before that class starts. That behavior dimension plan would dictate exactly what each student would need in order to be successful in that area. Is that clear, Bobo?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome. We've also built up our reset options. So I'd love for some of the new board members to come and take a look. Some of our board members here have seen it, but we have a reset room in each building. There will also be one of his that when it opens. It's a multi-sensory approach of working with students to give them a, a place to go or, or a skill set to have to work on their trauma techniques there, get some energy out of those types of things. So it started with a room. Then it started with classroom support. Then it started with reset boxes for individual students to have at their desk. So they're not having to leave the classroom. And next year, we're also going to be doing sensory pathways and reset areas in the hallways next year. So when you walk through our buildings, you're going to see sensory pathways in our hallways next year, which kids can be using and try to kind of keep them from having to maybe go down to the first floor, third and sixth grade, or the third floor. So just to ride and building our capacity. We also have community partnerships, stakeholders with a lot of different people at this tier two level. This is where we really start to talk with other people if we're still struggling with it. Youth Service Bureau, DC App, pediatricians, advocacy groups. This is where we're starting to bring in outside providers to help us in a situation where we might feel that tier one and tier two isn't really getting there. And now we're going to be moving to some tier three instruction as well as, you know, our great SRBI process that's run through our school system. We do SRBI for academics. We do SRBI for SCL as well too, which a lot of districts do. Say that. Tier three, this is where we get a little bit more intense with our behavior. So I want to reiterate that this is not, you know, board members, this is not just for students with special education needs. This is for all students. All right. This is not, this is something that we're putting in place before a student might be referred for a special education evaluation. So we have bounce back C-Bits, which is a great initiative. You say that God has partnered up with the Department of Children and Families in regards to this. This is trauma based therapy. We have trained social workers in our district right now completing trauma based therapy. That's amazing work that can be happening in our district. It's also very hard work. That's also very intensive work. And so we are very grateful to have Mel, Bar, Rosie, Emily, Kim, that give our staff time to complete this training. Because this is not something that you can just have a quick conversation with the kid and start to get some trauma stuff going on. And then also be like, oh, I get called. I gotta do something else.
Sheamus, could you, or can you, maybe a couple of examples of what type of trauma we're talking about, whether it's a threat, sexual assault? Like, we get.
Yeah, absolutely. Because certainly we don't, we don't do.
So this cognitive behavioral dimension for common schools, because cognitive behavior therapy has been around for a long time. There's a lot of research and evidence about it and they use trauma and how to use it in school. So I just want to first say that it's very specific. We've had a lot of training. We use very specific modalities for screening students as well as implementation. We meet individually with students besides the group sessions and with their families. So the trauma that we see ranges from being in an accident, losing a parent, maybe seeing some violence in the home, moving from another student, being homeless might be another one, and they've been exposed to something. There's some more specific traumas like sexual abuse, that that is not something that we're, we're really targeting within the school system. And we really rely on our outside partners to be able to meet the needs of those students and their families. For the younger grades, the student talks about the trauma and their response or their feeling around the trauma with a qualified staff person that's never talked about within the group setting. So it's very specific about the ways that we're supposed to be approaching this topic with students. And we have to be very mindful about where they're going after our group and we have, it's very thoughtful process. And I really have to give a big shout out to the staff that implement this because they see it's, it's very hard clinical work, but they see the change and they just notice the health and wellbeing of our students really get benefited from this. And I would say that CHDI, which is the Child Health and Development Institute, recognized us as one of the districts that showed substantial growth last year in all of the students that we treated through this model. So it is a tier three intervention for only fourteen to fifteen kids last year. Then we start, you know, each clinician runs one per year. This year we added a fourth person, got them trained to develop, you know, implement this intervention. And I was able to work with Gilbert School, who also applied to be a site and they were approved. So that's kind of an exciting partnership. We'll be able to serve more kids collaboratively together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what do you do when you encounter a situation where a child has a root cause, his family, maybe his peers, is beyond your scope to address, or is somebody or a child that's clearly trouble? You can identify the source of that trouble, but what can you do beyond coping strategies?
So yeah, so directly what we, what we, what we do is what we do every single day in our district. So that's not an uncommon thing in what you've just said, right? That's very common in a lot of our students in district and we just put all these interventions in place. So just because a kid, a kiddo is not going to struggle one day and be perfect the next day. So it's a process that we have to work through with that student. By giving some of these direct services like the C-Bits group or doing that being a BIP, we're collecting data. We're focusing on those specific behaviors to help that student, right? Now, think about this. If you had a classroom with, say, twenty two kids and you had kids, you had fifty of those kids all doing different behaviors, it'd be nearly impossible to do a functional behavior system in a BIP for every single one of those students in that classroom. Does that make sense for the fifty students? The teacher would be running around with her head cut off trying to follow all these documents. So in that situation, we would probably send in our school psychologist, our school social worker and implement a support system in the classroom to work with training on that teacher on behavior management skills, on trauma skills, on all those types of things to get those students to react in a different way than how they're reacting in the classroom right now. So that could be an example of a pushing model that we might do. It might be pulling kids out for a small group to do some work. Aire professionals are being trained that are riding different ways in small group instruction around behavior. So we have a lot of different models that we can put into place to support students. If it gets to the point where students are really, really struggling, we have the medical field that can help us at that point. We have psychiatrists, we have psychologists on the outside that we work with that we can, you know, get some further information from. If we feel it's a medical concern or something else that's beyond our, our grasp, and that could lead to another, another type of placement for students that might need a higher level of support. But I think what we're going to show you shortly is some really good numbers that I think you'll really impress with.
And I wanted just to, up here since what you're asking is, is there a child who needs to be further helped? Nothing else works within the system?
To answer that question, yes. There are times where our district has had to, as you know from our addition placement, so we've had to do everything we possibly could programming wise where it, it's happened that we cannot, we as a district cannot program for that student. I'm really happy to say that that doesn't happen to a lot because we have a really strong program in place. Prior to me coming here, and I said this before, we have over seventy seven students, I think seventy eight students that were held in district place.
So Sheamus, maybe you or Sandra can speak to, in this instance, you know, maybe how we partner with ICAPS, you know, when we have a student that needs both in-school support to be successful, but then also requires like a bridges out of school support or an ICAPS in-home therapeutic support so that it goes beyond the school setting. Is that kind of what you're referring to? Okay, maybe explain a little bit about those partnerships.
Just because that was a big part, that's still a big part of my job. I've had a lot of experience with that. And I will say two things about that. One is that trust and relationship that we have with families starts before we get to the point where we have to have those conversations because we need the family to partner with us during, to have some of these difficult conversations about that there's some behaviors that the student may be exhibiting that are impacting our ability to learn and function at home. So through that process, we implement some of our interventions, but if it's at a point where there may not be responding or need a different type of community collaboration, that's when we might pull in some intensive in-home services. There's a variety in the area that we have. It's better in the beginning of the year to refer to these services because right now there's a six to eight week waitlist. But there are, that's how we will do our partnership. And an intensive in-home program would probably provide services two to three times a week where they would go into the home or they would also come into school. So I've worked a lot with those teams and said, hey, we seem to have a problem around dismissal. Help us. And so we kind of partner that way. And they are integral of the students in social education. They participate in planning a place for teenage meetings as well.
Doug, if you go back to tier two slide under the community stakeholder partnerships, there's a bunch of them underneath there. Those are the partnerships that we're talking about. ICAPS, which is, you know, intensive in-home child adolescent psychiatric services. Like, these are all the partnerships that we have on the outside that we work with. Those will be higher level interventions that we've had to put into place. Sometimes families come with those interventions already before they step forth in our district. So they might already have these services from another district and they might move. Those services will follow students for whatever timeframe that they have been allotted during that process.
I think I just asked you another question. You said that with children who have sexual trauma or abuse, is that handled in-house until or that's immediately burnt out?
Yeah, usually there requires a lot of family work around that and a lot of disclosure. So the family can understand where that student is coming from. So there, there's more like specialized treatment team that is strong side family.
So there might be a partial hospitalization program that the student might go to. There might be a student with, you know, a needing disorder, right? Versus even sexual trauma, they might be needing disorder, they might have to go to programming that way. So those are the higher level things that we will partner with those outside service providers and say, this is out of our realm of expertise. Help us provide the best education we possibly can when that student's in our seats, right? But when they're not in our seats and this is happening at home or this is a struggle, what can we do to kind of do those wraparound services as we call them?
Okay, I told you I'd talk all day. I really just want to acknowledge our teachers and all the adults within the building because the, the power that they have to build relationships with students, you know, really goes a long way. What research tells us about students that have been exposed to trauma is they just need one adult within their life that can buffer the effects of like that toxic stress to have those resiliency skills. So that's easy.
One last thing before I move on to the next slide. As you can see, I've said to the board prior before, our student resource center, our SRC is what we call it. It was a program that was developed five years ago in response to students that were really, really having a really hard time managing in school. That was a self-contained classroom where students had to work their way out of and show us that they're ready to do that. Fast forward five years from now, we still have the SRC in our, in all three of our buildings. There's not one single student in our SRC right now that is in a self-contained classroom. We are servicing anywhere between seven to nine students in this program right now. And guess where they are? In the regular ed setting. So we really changed our mentality as the SRC is a place or a room to it as a program, is a mind shift change is that these are not SRC kids. These are general, these are regular ed kids that are being programmed for in the classroom with special ed and SRC triage support that we call it. So we've really shifted our kind of mindset. Like, I get that kids need to be contained at times. What's the object of that? It's great that we can keep them there and house them, but that's not teaching and education. Let's get them back into the classroom. So we really shifted that mindset and I think they're really successful. And we run that model in all three of our buildings right now. So to listen. So this is a really interesting slide that I thought the board might want to see. All right, as you guys know, I try my best to be as fiscally responsible as I possibly can in this district out of very large budget. I understand it. I look at it every single day and see what can I do to get a better education for these students, but still understand that there are students that might need a little bit more, okay? So Kate Sanders has been collecting data over the last five years of every single student has been serviced through our SRC program and we have that on. Okay. So we have, so since 2016, when this program started, we have serviced forty students, specialized and regular ed through the SRC programming, right? That might have been a fully self-contained student for a short period of time. That might be a student that's just getting support in the classroom for a behavior dimension plan or some assessments and things like that, right? Twenty four of those students have stepped down completely out of that support system in our back just as a gen ed student or a specialized student in a resource type setting or a gluten setting with no SRC support whatsoever. So that's a huge number. That's almost half of those students no longer need that high level of support that we were having to put into place to start with. Seven of those total forty students have been completely exited from special education. So if you think about that, these are students that possibly had to be self-contained all day, every day because of behaviors have been exits of special education services completely because they're back maintaining the system.
Sheamus, how does somebody who's got a diagnosis, an INP, X, exit?
Yeah, there's a criteria that we have to follow, Lord. So we have to do assessments. We have to look at classroom data. We have to look at, you know, outside factors through therapies and deal, talking with therapists. So there's a criteria that we have to follow with our student exits. But basically what it means is that. But basically what it means is that they can access the general ed curriculum without any supports. That's what specialized is there to do is to get students to exit, so they don't need that level of support.
That's really your measure tools is accessing the general.
General ed curriculum, correct.
Hit your issue.
And I think the focus before was academic and now the focus on academic and social motion, it's a combination of both, right? Lack of.
Sorry, these forty students then, they were self-contained and some of them.
Not all, not all, not all self-contained, not all self-contained and not all special education students. So I think we've serviced the regular ed students out of this as well too, okay?
And a self-contained program.
And not a self-contained program, so if you remember, SRC is a model, not a place. So some of these students over the past couple of years might be a regular ed student that's getting a tier three intervention. Special ed teacher might be in the classroom when that student happens to be. That special ed teacher is supporting that student by behavior data collection, check-ins and things like that. Trying to keep the health of the referral process. So out of those forty students, those are not all special education students, but they're not in a self-contained setting. So out of those forty, I want to say Cassandra, maybe ten to twelve, I would say are general ed students.
Maybe less.
Maybe less.
Being supported in the general education.
Correct, correct. We have taken general ed students and put them into a diagnostic place, which we have to do before, um, but that's part of an I P placement process.
I would say probably if I could get the number for you, but about almost half were fully contained. You know, and I would say that happened earlier and we've seen especially about three years ago when we implemented the batch, I'm sorry.
When we implemented the program at Bachelor for the first year, some of those kids that were, um. In, you know, second grade have exited now. So the sooner that we're able to intervene, we can teach those skills for behavior regulation and the learning costs.
So to speed this up a little bit, out of those forty, nine students answered questions, out of those forty had to be placed in a, in a placement at some point. Whether that be in a district placement, whether that be a hospitalization, whether that be, you know, expulsion, whether it be, whatever, whatever it might be out of those nine students. I don't want to be identifying criteria here, but those nine students are no longer with our district in the sense that they are not bodies in our seats in our schools right now. They're in another placement.
Sheamus, just to clarify, that's a K twelve.
K twelve.
Those numbers.
K twelve.
Stand all the way up to twelve.
Correct, so, correct. But long story short, the big number that sticks out is that without programming like this, those forty students. Would really be students that we might have to really consider looking for a higher level of programming for. So just to do the math out, ballpark figures, I did eighty thousand dollars for an out-of-district placement, tuition and transportation included. Thirty-one students sent eighty thousand dollars, that's two point five million dollars almost. So over the last five years, if these students would have to go out because we don't have programming in place. We don't have the support of our staff and our principals and everything else. We could possibly have been up, up more than two point five million dollars of out-of-district costs as well too. So I think that's a huge number of savings that by building a district program, we're able to be really successful here in districts.
Um, so, you know, with mental health issues, like sometimes it can be, um, kind of like sometimes it's hard to replace and sometimes not. So what do you do to support those kids that youth exited to make sure that they maintain?
Great question.
Where they are.
Yeah, great question, so we, we have those conversations all the time. Because a kid might be exited from that space, we always know next case manager and next classes, what should you teach about classroom placements? What should you teach about where those kids go and, you know, when they go to the Gilbert School? We have programming in place that we look at at the Gilbert School to support these students. So we're always looking for the future of those students where they are. Have we had students that have exited out that we've had to kind of pull back a little bit? Absolutely, but we haven't had to refer them back to special education. We've been able to kind of tighten the ship, maybe put a behavior intervention plan back into place for them, really work with them around some things. And then get them right back to where they're going. Kids are always going to struggle when you transition from one grade to another, it's, it's inevitable, right? So we just have to be ahead of the curve in regards to that, so it absolutely does have a blow.
That's feasible working with Gilbert School as well?
Hundred percent, yeah, we've had a really nice working collaborative relationship over the last three years in regards to that. This is the first, within the last two and a half years, three years, we've actually been able to start to build programming, which we have not been able to do in the past. So I think some last things to go and then we'll be on, okay? So Cassandra, real quick, just some celebrations.
Yes, um, so just twenty-four students over five years exited from programming and seven exited fully from special education. Um, we now can offer different types of levels, the student resource center programming is supported at all grade levels. Um, we started this year, we will get triage implementation team, which we hope to develop further next year. So the teacher needs some support with class-wide behavior management skills, our specialists in that area can push it to the classroom. And further develop our tier one, uh, reinforcement system. Um, I mentioned that we're the, one of the, one of the partners in the first cohort in the state of Connecticut to implement the universal screener. We have the bounce back implementation, only one of the districts in the northwest corner participating. And we've had several districts, uh, districts visit our, um, either our reset rooms or have come in and talk with me. Or some of our, uh, teachers or Sheamus and Superintendent Shanley about the programming that we offer. Um, especially in their own developments of cozy corners, calming areas. Um, we've had a lot of who's and ah's around the lights and the sensory materials that we have. So if you haven't been in, hopefully next year when things are back to normal a little bit and his nails open, you can kind of come and tour. Um, those rooms if you haven't done so already. And we've had some districts ask us for some programming support for some of our students.
The last thing, but not least, our C bits program, the trauma-based program that we talked about, it's a self-sustaining program. So we are actually getting federal funds being reimbursed back to our district for the work that we're doing. So we're getting money back by doing this trauma work in our district that come back to the district. So again, we're trying to build sustainability without having to use funds from other areas. So there's a big sustainability piece that we work on on a everyday basis. Thank you guys for your time today.
Thanks.
I think, you know, as impressive as it is that you saved the district so much money, I mean, thank you for that. I think it's also wonderful to be able to stay. Having to get over us to call up the district.
Yeah.
That's going to be a huge win for them as well.
Always greener on the other side, um, you know, some of the other programs that are out there, they're not as well. They're not the greatest programs when it comes to education. Yes, they can take these kids from us and they can handle them and help us with that. But the education piece is not nearly the education that they were in a whole district.
Sheamus, did you ever write up the whole SR, the, the reset room, the whole, remember we talked about that one time?
Cassandra has the, has the whole entire, uh, the program development that she has.
Not submitted anywhere. You should submit to ASCD or something, okay?
I just want to acknowledge Sheamus, Cassandra and our teams that are doing this work. I have the pleasure of being in a school building right now and working hand in hand with them every single day and our social workers and counselors. And they are just spot on every single day, they know our families, they know their needs, they know what every single kiddo has going on. And it's just impressive, you know, when you talk about relationships that are built with children and families. You know, I watched today Rosie and Emily triage a mom today who was in crisis. And she left in a place where she was safe and felt comforted and felt like she had an outlet. And it's just heartwarming to be able to see those connections and know that they truly exist. And it's not just, you know, a presentation, like, I can actually watch it happen and watch the impact that it has on our families. So thank you guys for that work.
Thanks.
Don't worry, we have anybody here from the public, so we can spend some of the current portion of the meeting and then move right on to the set agenda. We have two minutes, two sets of minutes to approve. Is there a motion to approve, we might have a regular beer meeting and committee meetings?
Motion to approve the regular, are we done both at the same time?
Yes.
So the, I mean, minutes and the.
Second, second, second. Discussion, uh, all the favor. Now, quick, we're making up time. Gilbert, uh, the only thing I could tell you this evening is I did have a conversation with Holly Cassidy and the, uh. Topic of negotiations will be the executive session item, the program meeting next month, or actually next week. So they are aware that the legislation passed that I guess stipulates that there will be a study. Certainly, set in touch by the Gilbert School. No time for any show of regret in the long, it's, it's kind of open-ended thing.
Yeah, it doesn't take very deadlines, just to make, you know, the formation of the citizens in this district. Isn't there a deadline by which the study has been presented, until nineteen twenty-three?
Yes, I believe it's by twenty twenty-three.
Again, there was a change in their June or July, I forget which month.
You're absolutely right.
So there's a deadline.
So that's a little over here.
Yeah.
There's just a stuff that does take a long time, the legislation or the channels.
Information.
We do have some courts wanting us to avoid this evening, some resignation letters unfortunately.
So we have a resignation and we have a retirement, um, so resignation of a para-professional, Cassandra Ciprilli. And a resignation of another para-mary, Celestis, who's been short-term employees with us. Um, I have a retirement letter from Robin Maswan. Who has worked for thirty-seven years at Pearson, so well-deserved, um, upcoming retirement. Um, we are certainly fond of her work and she will be sorely missed in our district. But, um, but well-deserved retirement on the horizon. So ask that the board accept her letter of retirement with regret, please.
Is she going to be recognized at the end of the year?
Yes, so, um, that's another thing that I would like to bring up tonight to the board. Is we are bringing back our annual recognition ceremony and will be held on June ninth. And that's going to be a crystal peak, you know, all of our staff members will be recognized for their accomplishments. That we have been unable to celebrate for the past couple of years. Um, and then we just have, um, one correspondence from Cape and that's believe it please on newsletter that's included.
So, let's talk about voting machines. Issue with space. Give us a brief summary of that, maybe?
Yeah, so, um, one, I want to apologize that this has even been brought to your attention. Because, um, I know it's not the work of the Board of Education to do the operations of the district, so I will apologize to that ahead of time. I did speak with the town manager, um, starting about a year and a half ago, two years ago. Nancy and I, um, had worked with Bob Giger to let him know that, um, we were running out of space at Pearson. And this particular office based where they have housed historically the, um, voting information. Um, was going to need to be commandeered. So last month, um, the board had voted to move the Head Start and School Readiness Programs into Pearson School. And encompassed with that is also office personnel that comes with them to support their pro- programming from at advanced. So they need office space. They also need the office space to be kind of, um, close to the operations of the program. So their voting machine, which is in the old PE office at Pearson. Is literally adjacent and included in the room that the, um, Head Start School Readiness Program will be housed in. So, um, I talked to Josh, um, our town manager. I would say just maybe a day or two after the last board meeting to let him know like this is where we're at. We were able to accommodate and find a space for these programs. Here's the downside of this is that the register of voters stuff does finally have to move. So, um, he was aware of that. He asked me if there was anywhere else in Pearson that would be able to accommodate. We did look into the spacing that the recreation department has within our building. That houses the athletic, um, programming, recreation stuff, um. They did not, Tanya had said that they did not have enough space to be able to share. Um, it also did not meet the security protocols needed to be able to house the voting stuff. So we really have no other space available for this large amount of materials. So, um, our town manager has taken it as part of his responsibility to, um. Find a home, if you will, for the materials that need to be associated with the register. So, um, he is working on that. Um, Pearson will still be used as the voting place going forward, that's not going to change. What will change is the fact that we're, Public Works or whomever Josh designates to bring the materials. Will just need to, whenever there's voting, they'll be dropped off and removed, you know, during that time period. So, um, what Josh offered to do today was to put his response in a letter to the Board of Education. Knowing that he and I have had a discussion on it for the past month. Um, that this discussion was pre-him also, um, so, um. And you can also see what his response is in terms of his responsibility to, um, handle this, um. Placement of the voting machines.
I just, I was surprised, I was the one who got that, obviously, and Robert's, um, that's intentions. Find what was going on, that was surprising, it wasn't discussion at the last meeting that Josh would have to move their equipment if we approved. At advanced come to the school. So that, that was disturbing to me, is there any reason why we weren't, that wasn't part of the discussion?
I mean, the operations of that, I mean, is really not, at that time, it's not a board decision around the operations of what needs to move. But, um, you know, the office space and the space allowance of having at advanced come in. Was what was voted on by the board. So I think the historic asked that, they kind of knew this was coming down the pipe. And like regardless if it was at advanced and that, like, we're out of space in terms of some of these buildings. We were going to need to accommodate that space regardless.
At some point.
At some point, yes.
I just, there was discussion at the last board meeting about what those spaces were currently being used for. And there was no discussion that there was going to be a need to move the registers, but that's what.
So the, at the last board meeting, the office space, we did not have an office space designated for them as of the last board meeting. The two things that we have, um, designated were the rooms that were housing the classrooms. I had not at that point been able to locate another office space. Because I was looking more specifically on the second floor at that time of Pearson. To be able to shift some of my staff around, not realizing the closeness and proximity. That the program required to having the office supervisors of that program there. So my initial response was going to just shift my own staff around and say like, here, I'm going to give you an office on the floor. I'll go to a different spot, now accommodate them elsewhere. Because of the proximity, that is why it did not come up last time. I was not aware of the proximity kind of requirements that we were sitting at.
I just wondered what type of cost this is getting, or tech, we have a machine moving back and forth. So how much equipment are we talking about, like, what is this? Right, so.
The machines and the stands, um.
There's a ton of it, because there's a huge closet in that office too, and that is full.
I, I honestly, I've never been in there because it's a long, secure room, so I've never really like gone. I, I can see through the window to see what's in there, but I don't go in that room, um, for obvious reasons. Um, it's basically with the exception of the folding tables, because we just provide those on the nights. It's basically all of the materials that are associated with the voting stand. That kind of partition and then the machine that actually does the counts, yes, so.
There's been more of a cost, the more benefit we're getting and having that advance. That's, that's, that's my concern, that that wasn't a factor. I mean, I just think that it would have been, you know, we've already agreed, voted on, only a shoe. And I understand it's structural versus policy, but I think it should be nice to have all that information.
So I'll take ownership, Cheryl, for not having all of that information at our last board meeting, I apologize for that. I was unaware that that would have been an issue for the board, um, as we move classrooms and shift around things all the time. You know, that's not stuff that I typically have brought to the board in the past.
No, I understand, we were talking, we approved two spaces.
Correct.
And now to third space, which is then moving another function of government out of the school. Which might cause an expense, that is something that true to the back that we would consider, you know, in making a decision. I just, I would just like to have all the information, that's all.
So I do apologize and I'll take ownership of not having all of that access, so apologize.
To store and.
They own bash. They own Bachelor as of July, so they absolutely could commandeer it for whatever reasons they want. The other option is, you know, they have Bank of America also that, you know, was not able to be utilized for the programming needs that we needed. So I think our town manager will certainly be able to find a home for it and.
Management whole town, trying to park.
Um, like I said, I don't think it's going to impact anything when it comes to actually voting in town. I think the simple thing is, is someone in town is going to have to transport this up to and from whenever it's set up. And I, I can tell you in my previous school experience, voting machines were never housed inside of the school building because of security issues. So quite frankly, I am pleased that they are not in the school building at this point because while it might be a convenience, it also for me is an uncomfortable thing with voting irregularities that I'm really not ready to be responsible.
Or they've been moved down already?
They have not. I said to Josh by June thirtieth is when, because we need to be able to shift around all the moving that's happening that week prior.
Well, and it's also important to have Head Start at.
We would have lost forty seats to Head Start and School Readiness. And you'll see the School Readiness Grant coming before you tonight, which is just shy of three hundred thousand dollars. All of that would have been in jeopardy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I apologize.
Okay, so we can put that one today for now and move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, moving on. Alright, so we have, we held our S-Back kickoff event, which was super exciting over at Pearson. Students in grades three to six enjoyed two bounce houses and a movie to celebrate our upcoming testing. And right now, our students in grades three to six are knee-deep in S-Back testing and they're doing a wonderful job, working hard. Our pre-kindergarten, two students though, received a visit from Gilbert the Pig. So we always try to do something very special for the kids every single spring. So Gilbert the Pig came and visited all of Bachelor and also second grade of Oak Street. He gives out fantastic kisses. He is a lover of green beans, so the kids got to feed him a green bean and one child, I think, got the finger involved in the green bean too. Gilbert was a little hungry. But it was a wonderful experience for all the kids to be with the pig. Our students at Pearson performed for the first time in three years. It was so exciting. The band and chorus concerts, we had an absolutely wonderful show. I put a lot of, I put a couple of samplings on our Facebook page for you to see. And they performed to a packed house. I think every single parent that had a child performing that night was there. So it was wonderful to see everyone back. Students are actively going on deal trips right now at this time. So far, they've gone to Brody Park and White Memorial. The kids in second grade today actually went to White Memorial today. I've got a very special picture of one of our teachers dressed up like a beaver today. So they're, they're all getting in the swing of things right now. We held an informational session for staff members that will be eligible for the library media certific- certification through ACEs. You know that we're having a really difficult time reg- getting a qualified library media specialist in the district. We're on specialist number four so far this school year. And I offered a program to our staff at the cost of six thousand dollars. ACEs will cross-certify, cross-endorse a certified teacher. So I went through our staffing list of people who were currently certified to teach, but not currently teaching in a classroom. Unfortunately, the four people that qualified all declined to have a pay for their cross-endorsement and did not want to further that in their career. So I am back to the drawing board and I'm going to continue to work on that. Winchester Public Schools, the PTO acknowledged our staff for teacher appreciation week. They received gifts, a luncheon and a breakfast throughout that week. We held a detailed meeting on science preparation and the needs around science for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And we are currently conducting, as I said earlier, S-Back testing in grades three to six. Under operations, we've held multiple and frequent meetings on the Hinsdale School renovation. We conducted through Teresa Payden's office, an annual site visit for our CHAMS program, which is our after-school program. And our program just absolutely shined. The gentleman just said he could not believe, given all the hurdles that have faced us with COVID and all the restrictions, the experiences that we were providing our students throughout this. So kudos to her for just doing a great job of. I presented our budget on May ninth at the town budget hearing. Thank you to the board members that were able to attend last night. We've held interviews for custodial, pre-kindergarten and sixth grade math, science. Under leadership, we have board of committee meetings, met with the town manager to discuss budget preparations. And also are turning to discuss our contract designs right now and make sure that we have all of the legalese necessary in our current contracts for certified and non-certified individuals. Some important dates coming up are, we have our TAG showcase, which is our talented and gifted program. Twenty-fourth is our board committee meetings at six-thirty. And we have end-of-year recognition ceremony event at Crystal Peak and board members will be getting an invite to that by the end of the week on June ninth. And I also want to bring your attention to, you received your newsletter tonight. So pre-COVID, we routinely had done newsletters that were sent out to families, sent out to town officials, realtors, advertising what has been going on in the district, really marketing our district out there and highlighting the great work that's going on. So we're back to that now that we're kind of out of COVID at this point and really looking forward. We really use this as a shining point of what's happening in the district and some different things that we'd like to highlight as important things for students and staff. So you can look through that. Our summer one that will be coming out will largely be focusing on the Hinsdale School and all the changes that will be happening and be very informational for families, including new traffic maps so that they know where pickup and drop-off is. So we'll have a beautiful informational sheet all about Hinsdale coming up for the summer. Under enrollment data, right now we are sitting pretty consistently right around five hundred and fifty-eight students. Overall, district right now is sitting at six hundred and fifty-six kids that we are directly responsible for. Under attendance, you've been hearing me say that our attendance has been challenged as we've come back from break. We are sitting at chronic absenteeism rates that I've never seen in this district right now. And I know I'm not alone, but you know, we're actively having kids out for four and five days at a time and, you know, that adds up over the course of the year with them being ill. It's COVID, flu, stomach bug, fevers. It's just, we've had, I see Emily shaking her head like, if it's not COVID, it's the flu. If it's not the flu, it's stomach bug. It, it's just rampant right now in the district. We can't keep up. It's really bad. So I'm just looking for it, forward to a time when this is not the case. You know, we had input mouth disease in the district right on her break. So like, it's just been one thing after another in terms of illnesses and what kids are exposed to. Gilbert School is sitting consistent at four hundred and eleven students. You can see that breakdown on the next page. Doug, would you like me to go into the budget report?
Please.
Alright, so Nancy's office has done a great job whittling down our budget. We're a little uncomfortable right now, I will say. So we have a lot of money that's encumbered. So we're sitting at around seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars right now that's unencumbered. We're going to be okay. I did put my administrators on notice, but we're kind of tightening our belt straps up a bit. We have a lot of money, as I said, that is encumbered. So you know, there's money that's encumbered there that is not going to come to fruition. So likely you're going to see this number balloon up rather than go down as we find things that are not, that are encumbered but haven't been spent. Does that make sense? Okay.
So can I ask, under the non-lapsing fund?
Yeah.
You've encumbered some money there. You have a balance. So why do you decide or when do you decide to use the non-lapsing fund as opposed to just appropriated money? How's that work?
Well, we'll use the appropriated money first. We might use some of the non-lapsing fund. We don't want to end up with a large balance in the, in our appropriated budget like what happened last year. So I think that, you know, if we needed to use it, it might be, you know, worth, worth doing to show that, yes, we really did need to use that because those are monies we asked for. And the question.
Nancy, can you explain what the seventy-four thousand dollars is that's encumbered in the non-lapsing fund right now?
That's the bar.
The bar?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
That's, that's what, exactly what it is.
Okay, thank you. And that non-lapsing amount there, that was the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that the board had put in the budget this year to be allocated to support the appropriated budget, just to be clear. So that happened last fiscal year when we did our budget last season.
Right. We have been trying that detection.
Right. Any other questions on that?
So we are still a hundred and thirty-four thousand to the good on benefits.
Uh, no.
Oh, that's, that's overspent, I'm sorry.
If you look at people transportation though, we're a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to the good.
So what explains the benefits going so far to the red?
So part of it is, you know, when we do the budget, you know that not everything that everybody thinks is going to happen is going to happen. And so I, I would just be very blunt. I was more bullish on benefits than I was on wages, which is why benefits is over by more and wages is under. So I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, I look at the whole personnel cost. The other thing that is, has some impact here too, is that we have more retirements than we were anticipating. And there are payouts associated with the senior people. So that also has a, a bit of a punch going.
Not only that, I just want to point out that this information also ebbs and flows from whatever it was originally budgeted because as individuals ebb and flow out of the district, that changes our wages line and that changes their benefits. Some people might not have been taking, if you were employee A that held the position when this budget went to place and you were not using employee benefits. But then when we hired employee B and they need a family plan and benefits, there's thirty-some-odd thousand dollars right there that now needs to be accounted for. So this information ebbs and flows based upon who's in and who's out in the district and what their needs are. And although it's true that we've had, that there's been a lot of fluctuation.
I have a question about the blessing. So I know that we have, we did.
The what?
The busing.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The bus driver right during, oh, that because we had difficulty finding them. Because of COVID and so on. But do we know like the length of time like that the kids are on the buses? My understanding is that it might be a little bit lengthy and I'm not sure if this.
So most children are on the bus for under forty-five minutes. Contractually, they're not supposed to be on the bus for, I believe it's over an hour. So contractually, they're well under the sixty-minute contract.
You mentioned that some employee benefits were contractual as they retired. One, it's one of the things that actually Mel and I have been working very hard to get sunset clauses with that. But the custodians have a very rich benefit still in their contract for buyout of sick time. And that's at their daily rate. We were able to have that at the twenty-nineteen hourly rate, which has helped a little bit. But we only have one more custodian, two more custodians that will be eligible for it. So well, none of the other folks, they've all come in.
So that's been sunset in it.
Yes.
So we have employees that are grandfathered into that class.
Right. And then the teachers too. They can take up to fifty percent of their sick time within a certain cap. Newer teachers are a hundred and fifty days. The more senior teachers are eighty days, so it would be ninety and seventy-five. And they are paid sixty dollars a day for their sick leave. So that isn't quite as bad a debt as the custodian buyout is. So, which is good because there are a lot more teachers.
There's more teachers. But that still isn't the teacher's contract then for those that brought them in?
Yes. Yes.
But again, that one's sunset also.
Yes, we can give a sunset clause in that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, you remind me, how do we heat our different buildings? Is Pearson gas or oil?
Yes.
Gas and Hinsdale will be gas.
Yes.
And do we have a locked-in price for gas or?
At this time, no. We have a locked-in price for oil. And we had a locked-in quantity for oil for Bachelor School and they just let us out the agreement because of course, what we're paying, we were paying for oil is a lot less than what oil is currently going for. So that helped a little bit.
I think it was gonna be two-twenty a gallon or something.
A big difference?
The, the price you would.
Negotiate it with the law dinner.
What was it?
I think it was around two dollars and twenty cents.
Yeah, but yes, it was a little bit higher.
I think it was two-twenty-nine.
Two-twenty. So they let you off on that.
They did. They did, yeah.
You should have kept it and sold it on the black market.
Well, but it was at Bachelor Schools. We had to go through the pumping and the town would have to deal with the, if you invest.
I think it could have been created, there could have been a lot of money. Although I worry how many of our townspeople are going to be able to eat their homes at six dollars.
Yeah.
That's a spirit thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
So when we look at the grants, we're still sitting high right now because obviously we have not taken out the last month's approval of the HBAC. Nancy's still tightening up a few things on that and that should be starting to be encumbered soon.
If the, the design.
Yeah.
Is encumbered now.
Correct, but the large sum is not. It will not be until like the project starts to progress forward.
Yeah, we have to have the, the solid number rather than just uncover the whole amount because hopefully we will need to accomplish that.
And when, when is that project starting?
So right now they're working on the design part of it. Nancy's firming up with the company. There's an engineer that does the drawings and all of that. So that's kind of the work that they're doing right now, the design work for the process. And then they won't really start to put anything in the building, I think, so, winter, I think, is what he said.
Absolutely. And that depends on how quickly they can get supplies.
Supply chain.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's set to be done by two thou- September of two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
So not this summer, through the end of next summer.
So Logan has any moving around to the building or something?
No, not at all, okay.
Okay.
Um, our lunch service, we have a balance right now in the black. When we're trying to circle zero, we're real close to it right now. We're sitting at two hundred and sixteen dollars. Again, this is not supposed to be a profit maker. Clearly it is not.
No, but we did just get some more commodities, which the state pays for. So that hopefully will help offset. We'll have to see exactly what we can get with the commodity share that we're eligible for.
What's a commodity share? Let's catch up on what's a commodity.
If it was, if the pro- oftentimes it's fresh produce, canned goods, a variety of things.
A surprise given the food shortages that families are suffering from, you know?
Well, what it is is, each school district that's eligible has a dollar allotment for the commodities. And then those are utilized throughout the, but when you get to the end of the school year, oftentimes there are excesses of certain things that nobody wants and, or needs. And so oftentimes we can swoop in and get something that we can use because we just run our programs straight to the side.
Right, okay. And do we anticipate that we're going to have free lunches again next?
Yes, because we're part of the community eligibility provision option. So that's good for four years.
Okay.
So they'll reassess us in four years, but because our free and reduced population is nearly. So they'll reassess us in four years, but because our free and reduced population is nearly sixty-five percent, it almost assures that we'll qualify for one hundred percent free and reduced lunch as we've done pre-candemic. So a lot of the schools are getting that benefit right now because of the federal dollar programs that are related to food nutrition services. But we pre-candemic had already qualified and families had already been receiving free lunches for breakfast for breakfast and free lunch because our whole community as a percent of sixty-five percent is high enough to qualify as for that.
Okay, so I noticed like Gil has sent out something saying they were trying to get people to fill out those forms.
Yes.
So they're different than, well, then once the kids go there, then it's different? Like we're still the same community, so I'm just wondering.
So their percent, you know, you just use a simple roll-up model, should be very, very similar to ours. They in the past have had in-house food servicing by their own choice. Since they've switched though to the federal program, they now become eligible for this provided they can prove their free and reduced lunch population and provided they put in the grant opportunity for it.
There are several districts that have to get that.
The question on the budgets and outside of the budget, but is there any differentiation of what a child has for free lunch? Or is it just?
It's a nice warm, warm lunch.
That's the same as anybody else.
Absolutely. Not at all. And if you have Seamus in the morning when the morning announcements are happening, usually he can make chicken patties sound like five-star meal. So you might get a brioche bun with sesame seed topping and an extra crispy um, patty of chicken. Like you'll get a special, special meal every night. It's pretty hysterical. You might be disappointed when you get to the end. It's like a volunteer. So.
He just has to enjoy. Should have been in marketing.
So. The kids seem to enjoy it. Alright, so um, Hinsdale, I can't tell you, I get so excited every time I go there. Um, it is just looking more or like a little special school every single time we go. Um, right now ceiling tiles are still being installed. It's like the never-ending project throughout the building. All of the existing tile in the building, which I'll show you some pictures in here, has been glazed. The secondary oil tank has been removed and that area has been reconditioned, which are, which are in here. Uh, metal is beginning to be installed on the outside of the building, the big metal blue squares. Um, the bathrooms are being tiled and routed right now. A new window company has been hired and will be able to install windows in late July, which is super exciting. The kitchen is wrapped in with drywall and the floors are being finished right now. Outside, if you are on the Spencer Street side of the school building, you're gonna see landscaping going in trees of, uh, it's just looking beautiful on that end. And then um, the playground, the cement perimeter has been installed. Actually got off the phone today with Creative Recreation today. Um, they are looking at trying to move the playground installation into either late June, early July. Right now it's scheduled for late July, but um, either way, the kids are going to be playground-ready for the first phase, so that'll be very quick. Uh, the pictures in the, on page thirty-five, the bottom left-hand is in the new corridor, new building where the pre-K and K is. So you can see that they've already painted the hallways, they're ready for their little blue lockers that are going in. The um, picture on the right is actually of one of the classrooms. I've tried to capture the floor design and the new windows that had gone in. So windows are being installed. On the next page, the hallway that's in the new side of the building has two beautiful skylights in it. And those, the skylights to the upper left.
That will never leak.
Hopefully. Never, ever. The classrooms are receiving their core boards and their whiteboards and smartboards right now. Uh, will be installed in June, but the core boards and the whiteboards are installed already. The bathrooms are basically student-ready. The partitions are out, the toilet fixtures are out, the faucets and everything are in. Uh, all the tiling is done. On the top of the next page on thirty-seven, the gray kind of blue tile that you see there, that was the original tile that was in Hinsdale. And they were able to save it all, so um, it was like a tannish kind of color, tannish orange or just kind of color. So we did have it re-glazed so that it matched the rest of the building. So it was beautiful. It's stunning in there right now. It's absolutely gorgeous. So it was a company that came in and it's a special coating that they put over top of it and it just absolutely resurfaced everything. It looks like brand spanking new tile. It is absolutely beautiful.
They didn't have to make it again?
No.
They gotta watch the drainage.
Really?
Yeah. So it's beautiful.
Hey, what'd you get for the windows? An American company, right?
We did. We went with, uh, they're out of New York. They're called Crystal Windows, so everything is American-made. Um, no more having to get aluminum from Russia. So um, they will be able to meet our timeline of eight to twelve weeks for receiving the materials and installation during July, so the windows will be in. It'll be a push to the finish because that's a lot of windows to put in, but um, they said they will get it done. Cost was fourteen thousand dollars more, but well, because our other vendor literally told us to look for another vendor because they were at the earliest looking at um, January two thousand twenty-three. So we've kind of figured. So um, the bottom picture, I wanted to highlight that that end, the Dunkin' Donuts end of the building where the stream is, they've started to block everything in. You could see the new window layouts going in. You could see the new entry vestibule. They put the railings up. It's just, it's turning in. You can actually see it looking like a school now, so it's turning out beautiful. On the next page at the top, that whole area right there is the um, playground for the first and second graders. It's hard to tell the size of it, but it is a huge area for the playground and that is going to be on the corded rubber surface. So they can go out mud season and they can go out, they're not gonna get dirty. Mind you, they will find the mud puddle though, I'm sure somewhere on that property. But um, you know, the surface will be rain-ready for them as soon as they want to go out, so it's great. The bottom picture actually should be updated because it's changed as of just a couple of days ago. They have poured, you can see the perimeter foundation um, for the cement there. They have poured the new um, entry patio for the inventory of the building. It's gorgeous. Um, and the circle seat around the pillar right there, there's actually two of them now that have been installed. Largely because one of the pillars required more support, so they added a secondary se- seating bench there to um, support that pillar.
A lot of that facade has changed still, right?
Yes. Correct. Well, it will be metal paneling, but the blue circle is part of the design, yes. So that's the update on Hinsdale. Any questions on that?
Or?
Can we just? One question. Are kids gonna have like outside like cameras and stuff? I'm just worried about this summer, everything being out there all new and.
Yeah, so I'm at probably right before break, before break in April with um, Bertcher. With our IT specialist and the subcontractors that are handling all that work. Um, we did add a couple of extra cameras to the plan because of security and kind of uncovered areas. We also added cameras to the barn once it's installed, so they're running an extra conduit over to the barn because we don't want, we didn't put any windows in the barn, as you guys know, on the first floor because we didn't want people being like, hey, what's in there? Let's clean this up. So um, we did add security cameras though around the barn so that it could be monitored at all times. You're welcome. You're welcome. Now, we handle reservations. Yes, so um, we have Hallie Cassidy. She is going to be a long-term sub for special education. We have a teacher that's going out on a medical leave. Um, she's gonna be helping us to cover that medical leave. We've hired Teresa Stark as a care professional to replace one of those other individuals. Actually, Amanda Warner, which I'm super excited about, is coming to us as a sixth-grade ELL teacher. She's coming out of Region Ten. She is also a parent of ours with a student in our school district. So I think anytime we can have parents as a teacher and can be out there being a voice in our community, it's just an awesome opportunity. So I'm really excited to have her come on board and she comes with rave reviews out of Region Ten, which is Harvard to Burton, just in case you weren't aware. And that's the new Hars.
Have you, in general, are you having good success in your staff in town?
We are, we are. Um, it's hard with the people that have not had the long-term commitment to the district. We're seeing more transparency with individuals that are under two years employed in the district. They definitely have um, less of a commitment, if you will, than employees that have been with us longer.
So we have some.
Last one, right? Thirty-seven years?
I know, yes. And we have another one that was a surprise retirement that just came up the other day. Uh, she also, I want to say she's forty, forty years. It's a long time. So.
She's actually can't say it.
Um, well, she announced Julie Pragnano, our ELL teacher, uh, which is gonna be hard to fill the area. That's a shortage area in the state. Um, she has announced just two days ago her visit, her retirement. Yeah, so it's been a long time. So.
We need to talk about some contracts.
Yes, so um, board will need to take action on two contracts. Nancy and I have been contract machines this year. Every three years we have a boatload of contracts that come up and this happened to be one of those years. Um, so we were able to negotiate with the executive and administrative assistance um, contract. The highlights out of the contract came out of a three-year deal to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. In year one, we have negotiated a one dollar an hour wage adjustment. In year two or three, they will receive a two percent GWI, which is general wage increase. Um, the recall for layoffs changed from fourteen months to twelve months. We added health reimbursement account for health insurance and that was for individuals, Nancy, helping us with healthcare.
Yes.
Could you explain that? So. I'm not there yet, sorry.
So what happens is uh, if you collect social security, you cannot have a health savings account anymore. Uh, and so the solution for that is to have a health reimbursement account. The difference between the two types of accounts is that the health savings account is completely portable. So once you open that account, if you put money in that account, that amount of money is yours. Or you, however long you keep it or you decide to use it. I mean, in the district, it goes with you. You don't get it back. A health reimbursement account is money that you do not get to keep. It is put aside for you and administered for you. Usually by a additional contractor that the insurance company brings on or the insurance company itself has a branch that does it. Gone through both at this point with our carriers. And so they administer that money for you. And if it's all used up, then none of it goes back to the district. Whatever is not used up by the end of the year, that money goes back to the school district. So it's a benefit, it's still a benefit for you. It's just not one that you get to keep any residual of.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Is, how is it taxed? If you use it, it's taxable? If you don't, it's?
No, because it's 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 part of the health insurance, just like if you use health savings account money to pay for healthcare costs, it's not taxable. If you use it by television, then it's taxable.
When did social security become a disqualifier for having an interest?
It's a flag because at that point is when you're eligible for the uh, first part of uh, Medicare. I think it's part A.
Oh, actually.
So that's what does it, that's what flips the switch. It's automatic with social security.
Thank you for explaining that. So under our health premium cost share, we have moved from them in this current contract they're sitting in and ending. They were paying fourteen, fifteen and fifteen and a half percent for the last three years. Our, I'm sorry, twelve, thirteen and fourteen percent. We have moved them to holding at fourteen percent, moving to fifteen and moving to fifteen and a half in both the health and dental premiums. Uh, we added employees who did not take the health insurance to receive a twenty-five hundred dollar stipend that saves us a lot of money on the district's end. And then we've changed bereavement leave for administrative assistants from three to five days. They were kind of the outlier in the district. Um, we typically, whether you're certified or non-certified, provide five bereavement days for individuals during the course of the year. And they were the only ones sitting in three, so we moved them to five. And then um, just we continue to clean up language along the way and define calendar days as opposed to school days. Um, specifically around the grievance process. So um, I would ask the board to consider approving the administrative assistant and executive assistant contracts through June thirtieth based upon these. Was.
And thank you for the. Second.
They've been ratified, yes.
Any further discussion or questions? Or do you?
Who was the second one? Do you want to?
Sure. Thank you. Okay, and then let's go on to the next one, which is on page forty-three. This is the custodial maintenance contract, um, again through June thirtieth, the two thousand twenty-five. First year, they would receive two point two five percent GWI. Second year would be two point two five percent GWI plus step. And third year would be two point two five percent GWI. Um, again, recall language, um, layoffs changing from fourteen months to twelve months. Added in the HRA, as Nancy had previously explained. Moving their cost share to be very similar um, to fourteen, fifteen, fifteen and a half percent for health and dental. We increased their safety issue reimbursement from seventy dollars to a hundred and fifty. Established a process to equitably distribute unscheduled and scheduled overtime on a rotational basis. This was coming from the fact that we had kind of an uneven um, overtime pool that was getting directed to one individual, um, not equitably amongst the different friends. So we, we sought that out. We added parkas, snow pants and road vests, being provided road vests um, need to be worn whenever they're within fifty feet of any roadway. Historically, uh, since I've been here, we have been providing them winter workwear because they're out in the snow, they're out in the weather. And I, I felt it responsible that we provide them with appropriate safety gear for being out in that weather when they're plowing next to the roads, snow blowing, shoveling.
Is that yearly?
Um, their parkas are good for multiple years, so like their jackets are expensive jackets that, I mean, I have not had to replace one that um, was initially purchased. Usually it's just their boots that we have to, they replace on a yearly basis. No one's ripped one of these jackets. They're kind of, I don't want to say like fire, they're like. Yeah, but it's waterproof, rainproof. I'm not sure what the material is, but it's durable outdoor, like maintenance.
So they just get them when they're hired, isn't it?
They get them when they're hired and then, like, we haven't had to replace anybody's stuff yet. Um, we started this probably four years ago, I want to say, doing that.
Three, four years ago, yeah.
Yeah, and so far we've only had to replace whenever we've hired somebody. So, that would have been that. Um, we added employees who retired must get forty-five days notice um, to be in good standing to receive their sick leave payout. You just can't leave your keys on your desk and say, hey, I didn't go home retired. You get forty-five days notice.
Mel, is good standing defined?
Um, it is designed, defined in due process, like, because normally, like, if you've gone through a predisciplinary and your evaluation status is not um, at proficient or higher, typically there's an argument there um, of not moving standing.
Amendment rules apply.
Correct. Um, we have. We have also added employees who are leaving employment. They have to give a minimum of fourteen days' notice. Hence, that leave your keys on your desk. We've changed the superintendent approval required to extend vacation periods from fifteen days to ten days. So in the contract currently, it said that you could unilaterally say, I want to take fifteen straight days off without Nancy or myself on providing approval. So we backed that down to ten, because that really does give us something that we have to be able to plan for to ensure that we have adequate building coverage. And then again, in cleaning up language such as defining calendar dates. Any questions on that?
How do you enforce giving fourteen-day notice to be the appointment?
So in some cases, employees have monies that are owed to them. So then in some cases, they owe us money. So usually, that is a discussion point. Right now, I'm in with our attorney, dealing with a situation with an employee that owes us money that did just drop this case. So more than likely, we'll be heading to small claims court on that shortly.
But does the contract have language in it that it's a doubt?
There is not a consequence listed in the contract at this moment. So that's
How could they owe us?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Because of the way our insurance is done and how it's prepaid and whether you're, well, these are all twenty-six K employees. It all is in how the calculations are done. And if you quit with no notice and you, the way the payroll cycle goes, there is the chance that sometimes people are prepaid and if they have not worked what they needed to work for the fiscal year. It's all on how the calendar ends up.
Why is it not applicationsless, consequencesless?
Because we could not negotiate that agreement on it.
Okay, so we have contract that says you can't do something, but we have no gravity in that contract.
Currently.
Explanable.
We have to negotiate, and it was unable to be negotiated.
So you still want us to
Correct. It's, it's stronger language than we had before, because before, there was nothing. You couldn't just walk in, drop your keys, and walk away. Now it leaves. I understand, at least we have language, though, and we're moving in the direction of at least being able to codify that when you sign on to us, like, here's the expectation. If you are going to choose to leave, we do require an ask for fourteen-day notice. It just, it's something that we I understand.
But if you do have to kind of go to small things or whatever, then it gives you more like
It does. It says, you know, if you didn't do this, yes. And this is going to be the first time, guys, that this has ever happened in my five years of doing this with this town. I've never had to go down this road before. So I'm hopeful that this is a rare situation.
But what kind of consequences would it give for somebody who just walks in?
Labor law says I can't withhold payment from them if they've worked and we've owed them. So I mean, outside of something that would be negotiated and agreed on, this is just language to say, hopefully, in good professional practice, you provide us with fourteen days' notice.
You create something like sick time.
Again, that would have to be negotiated, and I don't see that. They weren't really willing to budge on the consequential end of that. Stage National Association of Governmental Employees.
So you need most people to
I'll make a motion to
Second.
Any further discussions?
So I'd like to invite Emily over to the microphone. So just to reintroduce you all to Emily, maybe you may or may not know her. Emily is our assistant principal at the Bachelor School, soon to be in Hinsdale School. She also is the coordinator and director of our Family Resource Center. So she works hand in hand with Winston Area Childcare at Advance, runs our our council around that. So part of the work that she does is oversees our school readiness grant, as we're the administrator of these funds. So tonight, what she's bringing before you is the grant application that we have to submit. And she will spell that out for you in this presentation.
Well, first off, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to meet with you tonight and go open this school readiness grant with you. Approval for applying for the grant is requested by the Board of Education. So the grant is two hundred and six, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, just above that. And we split that into two programs. So we have Winston Area Childcare, who has eighteen full-day, full-year spaces for students. And then we also have at Advance, School Readiness, who has seventeen school-day, school-year spaces. So they are based off of the district's calendar. So within these two programs, we provide affordable spacing for students to participate in a preschool program. And the purpose of this is to get students ready for entry into the public school system and prevent or minimize developmental delays with these students. So within the community right now, we finally have filled our spaces. So with the impact of COVID, the spacing was much more limited. And now we can say that we have those spaces filled. So we're serving more students right now than we have the past two years, roughly. So as part of this grant, we have also a three thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollar fund for quality enhancement. So that's another part of this grant that we can provide to school readiness programs for additional supports that they may need. So this past year, we accept for mental health consultation. So we actually had a V C B A coming in to support the programs with the behavioral needs of the students. That's something that the programs have observed has really increased, and they needed support with some challenging students that they had in the classrooms and really targeting some of those behaviors and putting interventions and supports in place to help them be successful. And then those are, you know, supports that we can continue when they come to us at Hinsdale next year to continue to support them with that transition in and then make adjustments from there as we go. So this funding has been really beneficial to the program. They've had a lot of positive feedback. We had a V C B A from at Advance come in to provide those services one to two times per month throughout this past year. And then also providing with resources to support as they go further. So for next year, we were unable to get a V C B A, but we wanted to continue with some of the supports for those students, particularly around the social emotional learning piece. And then also supporting the sensory needs, which is also something that the programs have observed their kids needing. So we have, as a school readiness council, we meet monthly, and we decided to use that funding for educational equipment to support in the classroom. So we are going to be purchasing from really good stuff. And we have identified resources like sensory, like tables that can be used for the students. And it really, not only does it support the sensory needs, but it also supports their curriculum. So they're going to be receiving equipment that goes with those sensory tables that, where they have translucent blocks, for example, where they can build. And they'll light up through the table. And then they can also use that to support their science curriculum and fine motor skills. And then also that social emotional piece where they're interacting with their peers and learning social skills as they're participating with that curriculum as well. So in addition to that equipment, we're also going to be providing some other sensory tools. You know, within Bachelor right now, we have a lot of students that use different fidgets, different items that they can identify as something that works for them, to help them keep their attention and focus. So that's something that the school readiness programs don't currently feel they have enough of. So we're going to be providing some of those sensory items as well. And then including even like aromas for the kids to smell. There are some kids that really just need that little bit of smell for sensory, and that helps them too. So some things that they don't already have, that they feel would support. And some of this is also based on the feedback that we received from the V C B A this past year. So overall, we have the Winston Area Childcare Center. They would receive one hundred and sixty thousand and then at Advance, one hundred and two thousand, based on the spaces that they have. And, you know, I think it's just really important, I know we have mentioned the Head Start program before, going to Pearson. And we really wanted to keep them close to us. We didn't want to lose them because these programs really do help prepare those students for coming to us for that transition, so that they're ready to be learners when they get to us. So having Head Start and Pearson will allow us to continue to provide services for these students that's affordable, that meets the needs of the families as well. And then it also supports in that transition process where we meet as a team and we talk about the students that are going to be coming up to the school system so that we can have eyes on them and really identify who we have coming in, what their needs are, and you know, place them in the class that works best for them. So there's a lot of benefit to having them here and keeping them within our program. So, you know, we want to, we want to keep them close.
Is there a difference in the people cost between Winston Area Childcare and the advanced?
So, yeah, so Winston Area, because it's a full-year program, they get a little bit more per space, just over eighty thousand. And then at Advance, because they're just the school year, they get a little bit less per space. And that funding that they receive, it goes towards a variety of things. So some of it goes, you know, supports with supplies for those students. It supports with teachers' salaries. It supports with field trips. So, you know, maybe they're going to go to the pumpkin patch. And some of the school readiness funds would help support that, so giving them some of that experience and background knowledge before they come to us as well.
So you're talking like three and four-year-olds, correct, like preschool age?
Preschool, correct.
Four to threes still like advanced.
So, yeah, so the students that we have are mainly like the four and five-year-olds. So, but in, at Winston Area, they have three different classrooms. So the spaces aren't in one class. They're dispersed among the three. So yes, there are, we do serve this like the three-year-old, three to five-year-olds. So at like Winston Area Childcare, they have a toddler room that has some spaces, and then they have their regular preschool room, and then they have kind of one that's more of a mix. So, yeah, so three to five.
Are there people who are trained in S I?
So we, they don't necessarily have that training, the staff. They do have to be qualified staff, so there is a level of degree that they have to have. We are finding that there's been a turnover in staff. It's difficult to find staff. So they, currently, we just Winston Area just hired their final staff member that is qualified. So, but the recommendations and from the support that they received this year has led us to what we could purchase to support for next year. So they, we've had, the quality enhancement piece gives us the ability to hire somebody to come in with that certification to support. Unfortunately, it's been really difficult throughout the state for school readiness programs to find mental health consultation, behavior support. So those vendors have been really difficult to get. We do have money, though, where we could provide, within this budget, where we could provide some professional development to staff as well.
So that send out some of the staff to be sensory trained.
We could, yes.
What does the support look like that you get from somebody who is trained by that side?
So right now, look, for, so for example, for what we have this year, we have the V C B A coming in. So she is providing, so she's meeting with staff and providing some resources for them, giving them ideas and suggestions based on her observations. So she goes into the classrooms and she's working with the students, she's observing. And then she's able to take what she notices and provide them with strategies to implement.
Does that happen like once a month or once a week?
So that's, it's, she comes most of the time for two hours at a time for each program. So she'll come one to two times per month. There were little times where because of school closings, either due to COVID or the weather, where she may not have been able to come that month. But yes, typically, every, every couple of weeks, she goes in and does an observation and meets with the teachers and her writes feedback.
I imagine a lot of it is dependent on what works for each individual student.
Yes.
Probably just a lot of like trialing different, right, sensory items that until you find one.
Yeah, so she, yes. So by going in and observing, she is able to really identify what individual students need and then help them put a plan in place for that particular student. If there's something that the whole class could benefit from in terms of the classroom management, that's something that's been, we've been working on with at Winston Area Childcare. So that's something that she then can give strategies for to implement as a whole class. So it impacts individuals and, and the whole world.
If I can interrupt too, so part of our SRBI process we talked about, our tiered interventions, we also have our speech and language and our OT that work in district that actually pull kids out of both those programs for SRBI SEL services. So again, trying to slow down the process of just getting a referral from that program, we would send in that support and actually pull kids either into our pre-g classroom to do a small group lesson or actually individual sessions or group lessons with some of our staff as an SRBI tier three intervention and what it implies. So both our OT and our speech and language, I'll just do that as well.
So who would be asking the Board tonight for is approval to move forward with their grant application to support the school readiness.
Make a motion.
Great work for you.
What's going on with him there?
Well, he's very famous around here, I will say that. So last month, the Board of Education had agreed to have me put a survey out regarding interest around the Hinsdale mascot. We had agreed that there would be three options that we would present to the community. The first option would be allowing the students to select, quote-unquote, a new mascot for the Hinsdale school. The second option would be to maintain the Hinsdale Tiger as a mascot for the new school building. And the third option would be to transfer the Bachelor Owl as the mascot to Hinsdale. Below, you can see we had a hundred and eighty-three responses to our survey. The majority of fifty-five point seven percent had said that they would like the students to select a new mascot for Hinsdale. And then we have twenty-five point one percent of the population say that they would like to continue the Tiger and nineteen percent transferring the Owl. So the outcome of the survey is that the survey reveals that out of a hundred and eighty-three people that came, which was both the community and school members, it was open to everybody, they'd like to see the kids picking a mascot. I know.
So are you going to give them a control choice?
Yes, because we do have some parameters that like we cannot have as a mascot. So for instance, like the state of Connecticut right now, like you are unable to have Native American reliance to a mascot. So there are some parameters. So I think what we'll probably do is screen, let them put all their little ideas out there, and then we'd scale back based upon what they had. And then, yeah, let them come out with a choice amongst the top three that maybe the staff are the ones that joke about. Would that be an okay process that the Board would support? All right. I also think the Hinsdale He-Rose is a cute one. So, I don't know, so we've got some cute H's that like might be something to go down that road. So if I could just have a motion from the Board to move forward with allowing the students to select the Hinsdale mascot, So, um, if I could just have a motion from the board to move forward with allowing the students to select the Hinsdale mascot, I would appreciate that.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Yeah, and we lost Tori for a moment, but I'm sure.
I'm sure the majority is good.
Yeah, yes. All in favor?
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, dash, zero, dash, one. Thank you.
I know you have communicated with Holly, correct, about the M O U? Is it pending there, picking up, or are we going to take the first?
We're going to take the first, um, look at it. So, um, historically, what has happened is the memorandum of understanding exists aside for special education from a negotiated contract between the Gilbert School Corp. And, um, the Winchester Board of Education. So this has always been done separately. The language in the contract has not been altered in any capacity from what are previous M O U's. There are two things that have been updated on this contract. One was in the very first second line, which is the date of two thousand twenty-two, which will be the date in which this is signed, what Gilbert agrees to it. And then on the last page, the update of the, um, school court, court chairperson, um, from Steve Sedlak to Holly Cassidy. So, um, those are literally the only two things that, um, have changed in the M O U. This is the exact M O U that has governed the relationship between the Gilbert School and the Winchester Public Schools around special education implementation. It has been working. Um, Sheamus and I just had a meeting with Mr. Shagru the other night just to, um, make sure that we were all on the same page around special education and what, um, each organization's needs were. So there is still an open line of communication. And that I would ask our board to please support the continuation of the memorandum of understanding from July first of twenty-two to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you very much. I would like, um, work that with a friendly proposal. See where it says, uh, Holly Cassidy and Doug Benninger? Is that spelled? Chairman, Chairperson? Chairperson.
Chairperson.
In Holly's name, I believe, and say, C A S S P D A Y. But check that.
I will double check the spelling.
And there shouldn't be a space between the name and the.
Oh, yeah, there is a space.
Correct, okay. Change it all to Chairperson. I accept that from, okay, okay. Then I second that friendly amendment.
So that was a motion made by Cheryl.
Friendly amendment by.
Friendly amendment by Nora. And a second of that.
Why are we changing it?
Just because I have to make some grammatical changes.
I suppose and change chairman and chairperson. For chair.
Oh, it's Holly.
Yep.
Other than.
To be assistance, the motion, Chairperson.
I've been updating that. And I'll revise the one sent to the Gilbert School.
Okay, so with those changes, all in favor? So, yes, that's your answer.
Thank you.
Now, you try to play me.
There's a second part? So again, actually has an error in it because it says it always pauses second read. The first two policies are actually first. Oh, I see, yeah.
So.
That gender review, right, policy for tendics, tendons, excuses and dismissal, five one one three seven A. That was sent the last policy meeting for first read, as was policy six one seven one point two seven A, special education, both needs to be first read, they're both mandated policies. We don't have discretion.
So that's really just a typo because it, it is broken out, it's just, it should have been.
So Cheryl, should I first? Attendance is first or second, I just don't.
Attendance is first and specialized is first. The second to.
Thank you. Or second.
Second.
All right, I will have, sorry.
Do we have the one later? I think Sandra brought it up. That's going to be, it's being brought back to the policy committee and the changes. So that's not, that's not going to move to a refer to yet, got it?
Thank you for clarifying.
Then the other policy, it's no actions to be done in those except to move, motion to move them to secondary. Those two policies.
So attendance and specialized?
Correct, I make a motion to move to second read. There's a second? A second? A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Sandra, you have it? unanimous, okay, so then the second, secondary policies, we have two. The first one is policy four one three one, that's to do with staff development. This is going to discuss the policy training and we follow through. Excuse me, oh, I'm sorry, because it's. Sixty-one, I apologize. Page fifty-five, fifty-seven, there's a special education policy, which is sixty-one, seventy-one, dot point two sub A. Again, that's a mandated policy, first read. If anyone has any discussion on that, or we have a motion to move it to second?
Cheryl, is this, uh, this policy, is this directly from A or was this?
Directly. On step, go. Right, page fifty-eight, that's all right. Page fifty-five, right now.
Fifty-five.
Uh, preschool, special education.
Oh, okay.
We were in policy, any number five? But now, I think it's something else about providing transportation.
Yeah, we had altered the language.
Right.
And the altered language is in here. And that's what we have talked to, um, private transportation, students enrolled in the program as designated or if eligible for transportation per guidelines.
So to me, the motion was to second read. I make a motion to move policy six one seven one point two A, second read. Second. Second, oh, in discussion. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, now we have secondary policies, if we require action today by the board. The first one, page fifty-eight, fifty-eight to sixty-four, it's policy four one three one. It is about staff development. This is mandated policy, just updates language. Comes with the special public law act of when it's set to July. Make a motion to accept policy four one three one staff development, do you have a second? Any discussion?
Just one question.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Oh, I was just going to ask, five seems very vague, what does that cover? The training culturally responsive energy practice, what would that be?
It's really what the district determines through the professional development process. Um, that's just the language that they use at the state because it's a required competency. You know, they don't specify specifically what that can be. That can be very different depending upon the district that you're in, so.
It's probably better that it is they represent that.
Yeah, it's not directing you towards any one particular topic. Thank you.
Is this language consistent with contractual language? Is there ever issue with that?
We've not run into that issue, uh, and we also, when we do plan professional development, we have teachers that are on the professional development planning program. So they are part of that discussion and part of the decision making.
So where it says a fifteen hour period, eighteen hours, that's provided for special development required, that's within the contract.
Yes, it's actually not stated in the contract what the P D requirements are.
When they follow policy.
Correct.
Are there discussion, any questions? Do I have? All in favor, ready, first, second? All in favor? Yeah, this is approved policy. So the next policy is policy six one one two, um, school day. Page, starts on page sixty, on thirty-sixty-five. School day, check sixty-five. It's just, yeah, mandated policy, set it forth, what, how school days must be counted, what sort of virtual learning, et cetera. I don't think we did alter this to, we didn't alter this.
We did not.
This one was done, this was straight from A. And it's, you know, updated. We don't have to take anything out related to like. This one. So not any changes.
No, there were no changes. There were different versions of this policy and we elected a policy for the shorter, more concise version.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve this policy? A motion to approve policy number six one one two, do you have a second? Any discussion, questions? No, it's.
The last, the last line that says, actually, that's the, like, author a shortened of the school year.
That is, that is, you look at the legal reference, that's not part of the policy. It's just the supportive, the basis of the policy. Action, it's an action, state board of education, this B A, obvious question. Offer just one of your, which is, you're looking at the, I'm just.
I double checked out of this. It's written, so it just says it is the kind of statute.
Good, all in favor, approve this policy? Unanimous? Public comment, start?
Public comment, there is none, it's just no public comment.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, we have an executive session, so we need to invite Nancy.
It's on the actual agenda, that's the appendices, so it's on the actual agenda. You were down there. I think you have, I think. Stop our pause on the recording here.
I make a motion to executive session and inviting Nancy into the executive session with Superintendent Tom and Brady Shaling.
Second. Second. By Tori, a willing. All in favor of executive session at nine fourteen, unanimous?
Okay, now you can.
Motion to come out of the executive session? Tori, second, Sandra, all in favor?
At nine thirty-four.
Door shut, Doug? Not necessary, thank you.
Okay, also, this is my listener, that's, there is. It's okay, all right, okay. Make a motion to director superintendent to adjust certified, non-certified competition. Second, all in favor? Unanimous. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Nine thirty-four, all in favor? Any discussion? Going to stay longer. Sure, Martha, this lady, Nancy. I'll borrow telephone two, please.